Mr. Secretary, you ready? Please take the roll.
Mr. Asitola?
Here.
Mrs. Capiello?
Here.
Mr. Corolo?
Here.
Mrs. Spankhauser? Mrs. Lavin? Mr. Moses? Mrs. Sutera?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Messinger?
Here. Okay, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the Regional High School District have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin, Mr. Toscano, any adjustments to be made to the agenda?
Aye. No, not tonight.
All right then, let's move on to approval of minutes. There's two different minutes that we need to approve. The first one is from the special meeting that we had on September 12. We also want to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on September 17.
Motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so it is the 17th and the 12th. So we have a motion. Does anybody want to second that? All right, roll call.
Mr. Asitola?
Yes, since I was here for both, I approve both.
Mrs. Capiello?
I'm staying on the 12th and yes on the 17th.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Mr. Corolo.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. All right, moving on, communications. Mr. Boyce, was there any communications received that the Board needs to be aware of?
Communications are distributed upon receipt.
All right then, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first presentation will be the Annual Assessment Report, and we have Dr. Hazel, Ms. Howe, Dr. Taylor, and Ms. Schneider here to deliver that report. Just, you know, one point of emphasis, obviously, the, there's a lot of conversation these days about what the park assessment looks like in New Jersey in the future, so they'll go over some of the graduation requirements. There's a bit of a compromise down at the DOE with some of the state legislators in the past couple of weeks, so we'll discuss that as well. So, Dr. Hazel?
Good evening. I am presenting to the Board of Education our annual assessment report. This is for the individual preschool district. It includes the 2018 Spring Park Results and our DLM results, Dynamic Learning Math results. As all of you recall, in 2015, New Jersey adopted the Park Assessment, and that was to replace the High School Proficiency Assessment. And as you recall, New Jersey was a governing state for park. Under the direction now of our Commissioner, New Jersey has ended its membership with the consortium that produced the park assessments. We may be seeing in the next, you know, weeks or even months, potential changes that will be coming out of type as it is to New Jersey State Assessments. One possibly being either a change to, they put a test from park to New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. And that would be for English Language Arts as well as Mathematics. Presently, right now, there are graduation assessment requirements in both English Language Arts and in Mathematics for the classes of 2019, the graduating class, through the class 2022. As Mr. Sampson alluded to, the State Department of Education is seeking administrative code changes, and there may be changes to the high school graduation assessment requirements. We are anticipating that the state of New Jersey will move forward with some changes for spring of 2019. Some of the changes, and this may include, again, this is not official yet, but reductions in the number of tests. So you'll see presented here tonight, when we go through English Language Arts, you'll see results for grade nine, 10, and 11. And for the end of course, for Mathematics, you'll see Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Potentially, we are looking at reductions in those numbers of tests, with a focus just on ELA 9 and 10, and two assessments for end-of-course math. And again, depending on a student's entry point or starting point, it could be Algebra I, Geometry, or Geometry and Algebra II. But the requirement will still stand that students must take and pass ELA 10 and Algebra I. We are also hoping, and it seems promising, that the, they will maintain the menu of graduation assessment alternatives. As you know, if students sit and take all of the assessments, they would be able to potentially use an ACT, an Acuplacer, an SAT in lieu of their park. But however, to access a portfolio, if a student is not successful with the assessments, they would need to sit for all of those park assessments. We're hoping in the coming weeks that we will have guidance from the Department of Education that will help, you know, guide the district for spring of 2019 for that test administration. But the focus of tonight's presentation is to present to our Board of Education the district performance on state assessments for park for spring of 2018, last school year's results. And that'll be in Park English Language Arts Literacy, grade 9, 10, and 11, and end-of-course Mathematics, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. We will also be sharing a comparative analysis. Remember, Park knows instituted in 2015, so our district has looked at that achievement and growth since 2015 to the present. We're going to share that this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about our district work to ensure college and career readiness for all of our students. We have a number of, you know, intervention strategies and supports for our students. We're going to step you through what those graduation requirements are as of now, but potentially that may be changing. And Dr. Taylor, our Director of Special Services, will be sharing our DLM Dynamic Learning Math Assessment outcomes for 2018. So be here with me this evening as we step through each of those parts of our presentation. Ms. Shayna Howell, who is our Director of Correctional Instruction, Ms. Ray Schneider, our Supervisor of Instruction, and Dr. Taylor will share with us the results from our special education students with DLM. Pass over to Ms. Howell.
Good evening. So as an introduction, the Park performance is presented in five level, where we have one through five, one being the lowest, not yet meeting grade level expectations, and progressing up to a five, which is exceeding grade level expectations. And that's how one of the primary reports is presented from the state. We take a look at our Algebra I results from last spring. We've got a 39% meeting met or exceeded at that time in Algebra I. In Geometry, we see a 26% met or exceeded. For the Geometry end of course, excuse me. For Algebra II, 30% as well, met or exceeded expectations in the end of course, Algebra II. Shifting to the ELA, ELA 9, we see 61.4% for freshmen in English Language Arts, sophomores in ELA 10, 43%, met or exceeded, and our juniors in ELA 10 at 17%. If we look at our growth over time by department, in our math department, you can see that we're showing growth on Algebra I since the inception of the exam. We see a consistent trend in Geometry, and also a consistent trend in Algebra II. Moving to the ELA, we see upward trends in ELA 9 and 10. ELA 11, the last administration was last year. That test is now obsolete. It's important to note, I think, that the, in ELA, the population of takers in 9 and 10 is consistent. In grade 11, the split occurs where about half of our population goes to AP Lit or IB. So it's not the same population between the first exam and the third. Can you add more?
Sure, it's important to note that as well because if a student is enrolled in an AP or an IB course, they are exempt from taking that particular park assessment. So thank you to Ms. Schneider for providing that data. I'm going to speak briefly about how we use the data. The spring 2018 Park scores are a snapshot, and it's important to be mindful of that in consideration of how that data is used both globally and for the individual student. We use that data on a district and a school level to review our curriculum, to review our instruction, and to ensure that we are providing the support and the necessary instruction so our students are college and career ready. We use data not just on the park assessment though, on any of our standardized assessments, whether that be the ACT, the SAT, the Acuplacer, any gatekeeping assessment in order for us to guide our programmatic decisions and ensure that we are absolutely providing the best support and instruction. Park is aligned with the NJSLX, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So our focus over the last several years has been a very intentional component of building goals that are focused on standards-aligned planning and instruction. Really knowing and understanding those standards and how we achieve those standards, thinking about the destination and how we get there. On both the district and a school level, we review that data in the aggregate. In fact, just this past Thursday, we had an opportunity to meet with our school data coaches, and we did an exercise in using the Park Evidence Statements, which is provided annually, and they are aggregated by standard and by question so that we can fully understand how our students are doing on those standards, and then look closely is our curriculum and instruction aligned so that we can really make sure our students are achieving. That same really exercise, which is so important, is also done with our academic supervisors so that they can work closely with our teachers. This is an incredibly powerful analysis on a global level for us to ensure that we are working with all levels of the organization in that understanding. And I think the beauty of this type of exercise is it doesn't just apply to Park. It certainly applies to every standardized assessment that our students will confront as they work through their high school years and need to ensure that they are really exceeding on any of these gatekeeping assessments. Finally, a central role of this assessment data is for us to identify support that are necessary for really our teachers or educators. So if they need specific learning opportunities or resources, and what we have found with a strongly aligned curriculum and instruction, no matter what assessments our students are taking, they're going to be successful. The interventions that we include, which are important as well, really begins in the classroom. So the primary intervention is the teacher using formative and summative assessment data to identify student understanding and then appropriately differentiate instruction. However, we also have pull-out support. We have after-school tutoring. And I would mention our Title I Summer Jump Start Program, which is focused on students grades 9 through 12, but getting them ready for the upcoming school year. We also have two support courses, Algebra I Workshop and ELA 9 Workshop. And those are intentionally included in ninth grade so we can remediate any deficiencies early in a student's high school career so that as they progress, we know that we are setting them up for future success. I think these interventions, particularly the primary intervention in the classroom, are successful because of our dedicated teachers, our administrators, our supervisors, who really take the time to understand the needs of individual students. As Dr. Hazel said, graduation requirements, as they currently stand, are different for each graduating class. And I'll just take a moment to read them. For our current seniors, the class of 2019, they do have to take the Park Assessment. However, if they do not pass, they have a menu of available options. The class of 2020 also has access to that menu of available options. However, there is a requirement that they sit for all park assessments for which they are eligible. So that is the one difference between the class of 2019 and the classes 2020. In order to access that menu, there is that additional caveat.
Ask a question about that, 2020. 2020 was the class that got the memo regarding how the state gave out the wrong information last year. So my question is, at the beginning of this presentation, you had said it's possible the state may make further changes. Is it possible that those changes may impact the class of 2020?
They may. So we are waiting to determine if they could impact that.
Okay.
But right now, we're operating under the assumption that everything stands so that we don't jeopardize, we don't put a student in this situation, but absolutely. And that would apply to students, for example, that may not have passed, say, Algebra I, when they either took it in eighth grade or even ninth grade for that class of 2020.
And what's the date that the class of 2020 has to take the tests? Like, the memo was, the memo was sent out to them.
They are taking it in November now, and that's for the ELA, yes. And that's not all students, but students that didn't sit for that particular assessment, actually. For the classes of 2021 and 2022, you can see the difference. They, as it stands, do not have access to that menu of alternatives. They are required to sit and pass Park ELA 10 and Algebra I. If they do not pass those assessments, they of course always have the portfolio option, but they are required to sit for all of the park assessments in order to be able to access even the portfolio. It's important to note, as everybody has mentioned, that we are in transition awaiting whether the proposal from the Commissioner of Education is going to be approved by the state Board of Education. So we're hoping to have that information, which would absolutely make changes for these classes, including that the menu of alternatives would open up to them. So...
Do you think some of the changes will be that the kids are not going to have to sit? That the kids will have to sit to take the test? You think that'll be one of the changes?
It's possible, but we do know that there are only going to be two tests each, so that may still be a requirement because they have reduced the number of assessments. And in addition to reducing the number, I would add, and this is definitive, they've reduced the number of units. So in the past, we had three units for each test of 90 minutes. Moving forward, there will only be two units. So the total testing time for that individual student, no matter what, is reduced. So it's possible they still may be required to sit for that. Once we have updated information, we are certainly going to communicate it, of course, with our school community and with the Board of Ed. And at minimum, we know that students will have less testing time and potentially will have alternatives in order to demonstrate that they have met the graduation requirement. So, which is why it's so important that no matter what we are focused on, we are preparing students for any assessment that they may encounter.
Thank you.
How are you? I'm presenting on the DLM Dynamic Learning Math for Special Education. When the state moved in 2015 to Park, they also moved away from the Alternate Proficiency Assessment to the DLM, Dynamic Learning Math, which is also a computerized assessment. And that is similar with what the APA used to look like. It was portfolios, that were teacher-prepared and scored, very laborious. This was actually a very positive view by the state for this alternate assessment. Right now, it's only required in 11th grade in our district. They're only required to take it one time, too. So we have a much simpler process. I don't anticipate a lot of changes in the state as they make provisions for Park to apply us, while it's already a recent applied at this point. Instead of the common core state standards, we use the essential elements, which are based on the common core. And those specifications are currently available online if you're curious and you are by a degree level. In terms of performance levels, the Park uses five, we use four, which are basically self-explanatory, emerging, approaching target, at-target or advanced. And these refer to the ability of the student to understand or apply content knowledge in the teaching area, specifically what I'm reporting out today on Language Arts and Mathematics, which are the two primary areas. Our number is also a lot more, less than four. We go to the next slide. I included for a reference point last year, so you can see a comparison. And I did include the state for 2017. The state has not yet released 2012 numbers, so that's all the relative indication that we have right now. So in 2017, if you look at the at-target or advanced level for Literacy, the ELA Literacy, the state level is a 32%, and least four is a 2% issue. Just so you're aware, this is just for students who have the most profound intellectual disabilities. Students, the majority of special ed students take the Park. Students in resource rooms or in ICR classes, the much great majority actually take the Park. So you can see the actual number of students testing virtually for this model. And relative to last year, we did slightly fewer, but there's a pretty broad variety of different populations who take the test. So it's a bit compare apples to oranges in terms of each year, so it's hard to compare. In the area of mathematics, in New Jersey in 2017, the at-target or advanced level is 12%. Last year, within the FRHSD, it was 25%. And this year, we've almost stuck with that, and it's at 49%. Back to the presentation.
What's the benefit of students taking this test? Can the parents opt in out?
No, they must take it at least once and then they might graduate. Now, they do not technically need to pass because special ed has the ability to exempt students from reaching two. So they really just have to attempt the test. And it's one test, and if they take it, it's two. But some of them, if you take a computerized test, that's a challenge for some of our lower-level students. So the expectation to pass may not be reasonable for some, but they must at least attempt it, at least once.
So, and just, thank you, Dr. Taylor. Just, Mr. Boyce and I will be up momentarily, but a few items about the Park Assessment in general. You know, so there, it's a healthy step where the state went. To put in perspective, you know, standardized assessments have a place in our system, certainly. They're one barometer of many. In the, in the federal requirements, it has always been one test in the high school level in English and one test in Mathematics. When New Jersey went to Park in 2015, they jumped from that one and one to six. And so it was an exceptional jump. And what happens is, you know, we've asked for, for a number of years, you know, every district in the state takes these assessments on different devices, for instance. You know, some use Chromebooks, some use desktops, some use iPads. We've always asked for the device-specific data, wanting to know if there were any trends because some of them, particularly in the math, it gets very difficult on, with some of the software. And we wanted to know, you know, do students perform better on Chromebooks, desktops? What is it? Because we wanted, we would want to go that direction. We've never been able to get that data. And the Park folks also don't release their questions, you know. So you have a very difficult time understanding what students did or didn't get right. So when a student scores a 750, you don't necessarily know how many questions that entailed, what did that look like? And so it's very hard to make real informed decisions off of, off of some of that. And then, you know, there were no favors done in the implementation when students are required to sit, and they're required to sit. There's, you know, and so we've asked for time-on-task data so that we can understand if a student truly tried questions, or did they breeze through it? We've been unable to get that. And so there's a lot of unknowns about some of the data points here. And I think that, I think that the current administration is taking a step in the right direction to reduce some of that testing time. I think when we looked at our juniors last year, if you looked at a typical high school junior in the month of May, in like a four-week window, they were sitting for between like 18 and 20 hours of testing. It was pretty exceptional. And I think that we are moving off of that. What will, the unfortunate reality is that the Park data is only there from '15, so, you know, your general data points, you want at least three years of good data to make some informed decisions. And we might pivot into another direction as we iterate. It will continue to be difficult to make some sense of the data. And I'm hoping that we carve a consistent path moving forward. Much too many polit, too much politics at play down in Trenton about what the compromise ended up being, frankly, with it. And I just hope that, there are two distinct camps, those that believe that you need, you will not perform without a serious number of standardized assessments to guide achievement, and others that feel that we've gone too far and, you know, there's, there's certainly benefit to standardized assessments, but they have a place within the larger framework of what's happening in the schoolhouse. So thanks, folks. I'm just going to transition over to that podium for a moment.
So, we wanted to present to the Board this evening just a financial update of where the regional high school district stands currently. You know, obviously, we're on deals of a referendum that may not pass, a huge shift in the termination of how schools are funded across the state, and what does all that add to the regional high school district? So, a couple things. So, one is, the good news first is that we've been very well managed financially for a number of years, and we are in a position to weather a difficult storm in the immediacy. The problem for our school system is as we move several years out. And for those who haven't been following along, the state reinterpreted the school funding term this year. And what that, Mr. Boyce will give you the specifics, but what it means for the regional high school district long-term is a massive reduction in state aid to the tune of over a seven-year period aid to the tune of over a seven-year period, $25 million reduction. That's not good. And coupled with the fact that even at the 2 percent tax cap, you can only raise up to $17 million, what you have in 2025 is a district operating under all those new requirements with the $8 million less to do so than we have today. That's a very difficult position to be in. We were hopeful that a number of our capital projects that are largely far beyond the scope of the general operating budget would be taken care of by the referendum ensuring excellence on October 2nd. Unfortunately, that did not occur, so we're going to certainly chart a path forward with making sure that we take every precaution that we can to ensure the same excellent service for our students. And there's been a lot of discussion with state legislators and other political leaders at the municipal level, at the larger county level, and at the state level, for, you know, sort of saddlingly alarming about what's happening in some of the school districts as a result of this. The history of this was that there were a number of school districts in the state of New Jersey where the school aid was flat to 2009. So aid was flat from 2009 till this past year. And any student that had experienced a population growth, obviously, the aid did not keep base to that. So there were a number of districts, our own Freehold Borough, which is a senior district, that were really, you know, done short grip by the state. They just didn't have the money to adequately fund their school systems. And so in correcting that, I believe that there's been a bit of an overcorrection, because what's happened as a result of that is that the new funding formula, while it gives the assistance needed to those districts that had struggled for a number of years, it puts another number of, you know, about 200 districts on the same path that those folks just came from. And so you solve one problem by creating the same problem in existence, just for a different group of districts. Some might call that kicking the can down the road. It certainly, it certainly puts us in a difficult position. We have been working, you know, really tirelessly. I think last meeting, someone asked a question, well, what's happening behind the scenes? And what's really happening is, is we continue to lead with all of our elected officials to make this case, you know. So whether that's Senator Thompson, Senator Lopau, Senator Dancer, Clifton, State Senator Sweeney, this Thursday, we have a meeting with. We are talking to all these folks to explain clearly what the financial impact to this school district will be in subsequent years. And it's, it's certainly not, I've never wanted to, and it's never been our practice, to get up and say, oh my gosh, this is going to happen, we're going to reduce this, that, and this. Because I don't think that creating panic solves anything. But I think any of us in the room could do the math, that our operating budget with an $8 million hole in it, is $8 million in reductions. And that's intense. And it puts us in a very difficult position long term. And it's, it's complicated, you know. The state funding formula is very complex. How a community's ability to pay is determined, is very complex. Mr. Boyce and I testified in Trenton, making the case that there's a lot of voodoo math that goes into it, and the state backs into their numbers all the time, to the detriment of some communities. So I'm going to turn it over to Sean to give sort of a high-level overview of where we are financially. But I think it's, it's important for the larger community to understand that we are on a very dire path, and that that path is going to come with significant reductions in the system long term if we don't get off of that path. And I'm hopeful. Mr. Bruno told me I'm too hopeful sometimes, but the, I'm hopeful that we can, we can convince some of our elected officials that the path that some school districts have been placed on since they've just come out of it is the very same path, and that there might be opportunities for us to step off of that path, through legislation. For instance, you know, if you give folks perspective, the Freehold Regional High School District educates students $3,000 less per pupil than the state average. That's $3,000 for every student. That's our economy scale, because we're a regionalized system, and we realize that. The 2 percent cap is here to really ultimately bring smaller districts to their needs. So that's why using the weather sign of this difficult circumstance a little bit more effectively, and do it at cost, at scale, that allows us to deliver the programs that we, Charles are going to use a lot of the specifics. So, board, a brief presentation on an important topic. What I want to accomplish tonight is just to pull these various pieces together into a real high-level look at where we stand in a comprehensive way, so that you can have that point of reference as we move forward and in the months to come. I'm sure this will be an ongoing topic of conversation in one aspect or another. So, what are the influences affecting our school district at this time? And as Mr. Sampson stated, one of those significant influences is the loss of state aid projected out over the next six years, overall seven years, including the current year. So, for, for that prognosis, it's something that is significant, it's compounded, and it's also sustained cuts. So it's not simply a matter of, we're going to defer this, or we're not going to do this for this particular year. The cuts are compounded over time. So, but in the, in the grand scheme of things, how does that fit in? I think in order to have a good perspective on that, I just want to give you a quick reminder of the highlight of how our budget revenue comes in. And there are really three major factors to that. Two-thirds of our revenue comes from property taxes. Increase in all property taxes, as you know, are limited by 2 percent per year, with a few exceptions, which we sell and take. 25 percent of our overall revenue is from the state, so that's $15 million, $200 million operating budget, $50 million in state aid, half of that going away over time. And the third is fund balance, also called surplus, synonymous for purposes of this conversation. And that's, although it's a fairly minor component of it, it does have a significant impact because of the other two factors and how that grows over time. We'll take a look at that in a moment. School funding reform, declining fund balance and capital needs. So the failed referendum, or $40 million, has approximately 50 percent of that, a little more than 50 percent of that, is work that we will need to do in the years to come, the immediate years to come, regardless of referendum. So that's another influence that's putting pressure on our overall financial decision. So for that $200 million budget, let me first review, break down the revenue briefly. Now, there are two different things going on here. The, the red line is the overall cap of our revenue over time, going back and I've gone forward, and that corresponds to the right side of that. The numbers on the right side are gray. So you can see the overall impact. The bar in the graph that corresponds to the amounts on the left side is the breakdown of that revenue. So, if we look at those one at a time, the blue bar, as you can see, and as we've just discussed, is property taxes. This assumes an increase in property taxes of 2 percent a year. So just to make some basic assumptions, to see how this grows over time. State aid, the green bar, you can see that moving down over time for the next six years, and ultimately arriving at about the cap where it is right now. And now, in a very small but important piece of this, is that purple bar for fund balance. So let me just explain how this works. At the end of each fiscal year, whatever is remaining unspent in the budget is dedicated, set aside, could be revenue funding the next budget that we build. So as our revenue is compressed, as you might expect, the amount that we are going to have lapsing at the end of each year is going to go down. And that means that revenue against those future budgets which that would have funded will also go down. So, the current amount of surplus that we've been able to consistently fund, we've been able to use that to absorb the $1.2 million decrease in state aid for the current fiscal year, and that's, that we'll look to in the next fiscal year. But after that, we'll play out that part, and then the compounding effect of all of these factors adds into that. So there's our, our pass of revenue in a very high-level way. So revenue versus appropriations. The appropriations, the blue and up until the current date, green bars, are the actual spending that the district has, has seen up to date. Now, we've averaged an increase of spending of about 1.5 percent. The green, as you can see, varies from year to year, because that represents capital improvements that are separately funded outside of our normal revenue stream. What, from fiscal year 2024, what I've done is, I pulled those essential elements out of the referendum and added them over time. Now, in the weeks to come, I'll be working with the architects to further identify which projects are priority for briefing, for paving, and so on, the other areas. But as you can see, the, the additional item in the green going forward makes the situation even more difficult. Any questions on that? So, what I wanted to do tonight was just to give you that high-level view of it. We will continue to, as Mr. Sampson mentioned, advocate for, for our community at the legislative level. We'll consider legislative moves, legal moves, and we have some, some options there that we'll be exploring. We think that recognizing uniqueness of a regional district like this is something that we can hopefully successfully pursue to defend with additional funding for Freehold And that's something we'll be focusing on along the way. Also, revised capital project plan. We will consider and bring back to the board for their consideration some alternative referendum considerations. There are dates in the coming months that we're considering going out for a modified referendum. We'll also prioritize and sign those projects through the upcoming budget years, if that's not something that the board wishes to pursue. And finally, you know, program impact is something that we're all going to work together very closely to minimize the impact on our students going forward of reductions in state aid and also in our capital needs. Make a picture, overall view, any questions on that?
So just, thank you, Mr. Boyce. And, you know, we have, so there's a meeting this week that I'm able to attend with Senator Sweeney's office, who was the main architect of S2, which altered the funding, and really hoping to just lay out the financial metrics of the district and the efficiencies that are brought by the regional model, and make the case that if, if the state's goal has been consolidation and regionalization, we're already there, and we can already look back and speak to the financial efficiencies and the ability that we've been able to deliver our programs at an economy of scale to do that. So that will be ongoing conversation. A few notes, just to double back to the assessment presentation as well, and then I'll, I'll conclude my report after that. We're in a difficult position with the CUSAC monitoring, so, you know, districts in New Jersey are monitored every three years, and it's known as CUSAC. And the county superintendent comes out with his team, does a, a significant paper audit of the district, but then also visits with the district and looks for certain things along, bless you, along five different categories over, over a period of a few days. And one of the things that was baked into the most recent CUSAC requirements was your participation rate in Park. And so remember, when they first rolled Park out, there was a significant refusal rate across the state. And so then there were ways that folks sought to compel districts, to compel their students to participate. We will not pass that component of CUSAC for the first time ever. Our participation rate in Park is simply not there, especially over the first two years of implementation. And it's, it's difficult at the high school level when folks are given the option to sit or not on assessment, and then we were held hostage by those numbers. So a little bit, certainly something that we met with the, the architects of that plan a couple of years back, representatives from all the regional high school districts across the state, there's 31 of us, and made that case that this was going to be a very difficult road for us with the refusal rates. And so that's, it stayed in at this point, though. So just to, to prepare the board for, for that. A few other notes, just in general, across the district, move through our magnet program, open houses.
Mr. Simpson, I have just a question. As I was just pointing out, I have an excellent question. The, the drop-off from '21 to '22, I just wanted to point that out. That is the first year of us not generating fund balance, and that's the impact of that. I thought it was a good point, but as you can see, it has some significant impacts.
Thank you, Sean. We had Financial Aid Night on September 27th at Howe High School. Had several hundred parents attend that. And again, remember, we have six different events across the six high schools related to the college and career planning process. The College and Career Planning Night specifically at Coltsneck High School on October 11th. Proud to announce that Coltsneck High School received the Ocean First Model Grant, Classroom Model Grant, for $10,000 to redesign a, a modern learning space, so we're proud of that. Spooktacular this past Friday, always one of the best community events in, in the area. We, we have students from art classes across district high schools come down to Freehold, and they work on a project. They see a part project from start to finish, and end up painting the, the windows there in the downtown area with businesses that volunteer to have their windows painted. It's, it's a terrific community day if you walk around the streets on that day. There's dozens and dozens of Freehold Regional High School District students, I think, really representing the school system in a, in a, in a special way, interacting with the community. It's always, it's always, it's always a terrific afternoon, morning and afternoon. And then, you know, as to Mr. Boyce's point, we will, we will have some ongoing conversation about next steps with, with the referendum and what that looks like for us as a district. Certainly, a number of those capital projects that were included in that referendum aren't, the need is not going to dissipate, it's only going to increase in the coming years. So, we are, we are a six-high-school district, but we operate really eight different buildings. When you look at transportation in this building, the average age of those buildings is, is well north of 50 years. Coltsneck is certainly our newest building, that's 20 years old, but you get into some of our, our spaces, and they're 60 and 80 years old. And so that's, that's something that a number of districts are obviously facing with some aged facilities, but it presents a, a real difficult dilemma moving forward with the state aid reduction and with the 2 percent cap. And that concludes my report. Mr. Messinger.
Okay, thank you. Since our last meeting, there haven't been any committee meetings. Therefore, we are going to move on to public participation. We have two people signed up to speak. The first gentleman is Raj Gardilla. And once you get up there, Mr. Gardilla, if you could just state your name and address into the mic. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Raj Gardilla. I'm from Marlboro, New Jersey. So I was brought in at the present board numbers. I see the parents in the eighth grade is attending the FRHSD Learning Center Information Sessions, just like I did last year for my daughter, not knowing anything about the entrance exam test paper. After I found out the details about the test, on August 27th, I informed the board in this meeting, on August 27th, FRHSD Learning Center entrance test paper is repeated from the previous years, and some students who went to a particular test information center had access to it, and others did not. I'm not sure if the board and any principals of the high schools had knowledge of this issue. In my view, this is the biggest dishonesty administration due to the community, parents, and the students. Conducting the test is the highest standard, is the most important responsibility of the And so I would like to know what the board is trying to answer to the parents of the kids who already made it to the program, who had access to the test, and the parents who did not, and the kids who did not made it to the program, who did not access to the test. Since this entire selection process was compromised, so after two meetings, I want to know if there is any decision made, and I don't know if the board was aware of this problem from the beginning that everybody was receiving.
Okay, so as I'm to understand it, and I know you've come here twice, this is the third time you've spoken. So, from what I understand, what you just said was that you're saying that students applying to the Learning Center academies, some of them had access to the exam beforehand... applying to the Learning Center academies, some of them had access to the exam beforehand and thus did better than others who did not. Is that your point? Okay, Mr. Sampson. I know you've addressed this matter the first time Mr. Gardilla was here, so if you have, you know, anything to add to what you had said before.
Because I see the parents every day going from school to school. I mean, I did the same thing last year. I didn't know that after my dad bought the test, then I could know that this test has been going on. Number of kids, I was actually very shocked to hear that this happened in my district.
Well, so if anyone's aware of any academic dishonesty, I would ask them to report that to us. No such issues were reported to us.
I'm reporting right now.
But saying that somebody had access to the test is not a formal reporting. What's happened across the county is sort of a sad circumstance of these cottage industries that have sprouted up, you know, sort of pretending to be able to say, "We'll help you do better on these, on these entrance exams" to Freehold Regional High School District Magnet Programs, County Vocational Programs, any other entrance in some of the other area schools. We look at our tests every year. I think we're all actually moving to a different platform this year entirely, so I've never heard any instance of someone having access to the test. And I can guarantee you, if they did, we have a new assessment this year, so I'm not, I wouldn't be concerned about it.
You're not concerned about this?
We have a new platform.
No, I mean, no one is aware of this, this test is being, you know, the same test that many of the board members are not aware of this?
We're not aware of any academic dishonesty. We take the protocols of giving that assessment very, very seriously, and that's, that's an entire day with a significant number of staff deployed to that, to that assessment to make sure that there is no academic dishonesty during, during the assessment. No, I have had zero folks bring that to me.
I'm bringing that, right, this is my kind of a kid, so I can bring the proof.
But sir. Right, sir. So contact Ms. Howe and give her your specifics, and we'll address that.
What do you mean, address that? This is happening now, I'm telling you. So at least what are we going to do to students who are in the program, or at least?
Sir, sir, if you have specific information of academic dishonesty, contact Mrs. Howe's office, and we take that very seriously, and we will address it.
So the test is going to be the same from next year, or is it going to be exactly the same?
I just said that the test is different this year from previous years.
There are always revisions to that assessment, yeah.
On an annual basis, right.
At least, I think, as chairman, what do you get to start discussing this with all our members?
Well, the, the, right, okay. So I do think, as Mr. Sampson said, if you have examples of cheating and that kids have the exam, you need to bring it to the administration's attention so they can address it. And I think you do need to go into more detail, so these actual incidents of cheating, they need to be addressed. If you, like, what you, the information you just gave us doesn't give the administration anything to go on. So if you give the specifics, then it can be investigated. And as Ms. Hazel said, she just made the claim that there, the test is not exactly the same every year. This year, as Mr. Sampson said, it's a whole new platform, it will be a different test. So if we go backwards, Ms. Hazel just said that the test wasn't the same year after year.
We evaluate it each year, and sometimes there are updates to that test. That's what we're, we're going through a review process. We do that every couple of years, and next year there is a new assessment.
But academic dishonesty is certainly taken extremely seriously, so please give the examples to the administration so.
We can investigate.
Yeah, right, exactly. Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Singer from Marlboro.
My name is Alan Singer from Marlboro, New Jersey. My son is a junior at Marlboro High School in this program, and I wanted to speak a bit tonight about the French situation at Marlboro High School. So I think I speak for all the parents of French students at Marlboro High School, many of which are here tonight, that were extremely disappointed in the situation regarding the French and how it was handled. So that said, I have spoken to Dr. Bleakley and Mr. Gillan over the past week or so, and I do fully understand the situation there, but I did have points that I wanted to make. So first point is that I think we kind of questioned how the situation of the French was communicated to parents or not communicated. So in essence, our children, the students, were told about French ending before this school year, before the parents were told. So I think speaking as a parent, we would have liked to have known in advance how it was communicated to our children, and really been part of the decision, understanding why, and being a little bit better prepared to decide what to do next, and possibly to have an alternative. Second, I am, you know, I wanted to say that I do think that we were short-sighted, and my understanding here is that the incumbent teacher who was supposed to finish this school year was made part-time at some point during the summer or beginning of the school year, which, at least to my knowledge, contributed to the resignation. So in my mind, that was probably a bit short-sighted, and that a teacher being made part-time would, you know, we could have known that it would likely lead to a resignation. I know that the teacher was replaced, and that did not last for two weeks. So we're in this situation now where we have my son and other children who really would have life completed this school year, taking French. You know, my son specifically is a junior, getting ready to apply to college, and, you know, he was assuming that he would have three years of a part-time, which is now potentially unlikely. I mean, there are some options, but really none of them were great. So again, I just want to make sure the board is aware. You know, we're represented here tonight, there are a lot of parents who I know are not happy about, the students that are not happy. I wanted to make sure that everything is being done to rectify the situation, if it's even possible at this point. I do know some of the parents are considering an online course in French as opposed to going to continue here, which is an option. I think some parents are concerned about the funding of that, and they do think that the funding should be covered in some way by the board, if that's even possible, but I wanted to raise that as well. So I do think this, I do think this situation is unfortunate, and I think it ultimately hurts the students that really apply to complete French, and so which is probably selling the French students back to middle school. So that's very much relevant.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. I just want to say one thing before handing it over to Mr. Sampson. You are aware, and I don't want to insult your intelligence, but you are aware why this is happening, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No, so, Ms. Singer, I appreciate, you know, the French parent group, and there's still a couple of options that we're looking at, but the backstory to all of this across the district is the, over time, our sending districts moved away from French, with the exception of Howe. Howe's the only K8 that now even offers French. And so our enrollment started to dwindle significantly across the district, to the point where Marlboro was affected. But last year, when we looked at our staffing numbers, we had staff in the district who have been full-time French teachers in the district for 20-plus years that were looking at potentially being part-time, simply because we weren't going to create classes, just, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't do that from a, from a financial responsibility standpoint. What we did, what we did ask folks to do is we said, "Look, this year's bad. It's dwindling significantly in subsequent years. Please do everything you can be to be dual-certified, because the one thing that the K8s have not reduced is Spanish." You know, so Spanish still seems to be a very popular language. At Marlboro High School, Marlboro is the, is the only high school of the six that had four languages, so it's, it's still at three, just to give perspective from the district. I email, there's a parent email group that I emailed today that said, "We're still working on some things, there'll be some subsequent communication coming forward." I think that, you know, we're trying to find every opportunity to either maintain those students or give them that same opportunity somewhere else. It's, it's an unfortunate situation, and I do think that over the next 24 hours or so, there'll be some, some information that comes out that will help some of the parents rest a lot easier with where we're heading with. The long-term solution here is that, the truth of the matter is that in the district, French is, is, is not going to exist a couple of years now. There's just not the enrollment to sustain it.
Yeah, I think we realize that. I think at least myself and my wife were aware that this would have been the last year, but we had hoped that they would be able to finish out the year and not have to decide, you know, on some other option one month into the school year, which would have been some other class or a lower-level other language class that they would then be among mine.
And.
Did your son have two years of French?
My son has two years.
He has two years of French?
Yes.
And of cour, and just so everybody knows, we are accepting the resignation of that teacher. It's in the meeting minutes for this meeting, so that's basically the problem, that the teacher, the one teacher resigned, which you know. So it is a, it is a horrible situation, but you need someone to teach the class.
Right, we were hoping that there was some other solutions, some out-of-the-box solutions to, you know, allow the class to continue, substitute a graduate student. I don't know if these things were possible or, you know, options, but there was some possibility of that.
Yeah, there's, so you need a certificated staff member, right? It doesn't necessarily need to be a French teacher. We've looked at those different options. There's a couple of things that, that over the past couple of days, we've been, we've been digging into, and it's, it's, I'm not going to say anything tonight because it's not established, and I don't want to be out here on camera saying, "Oh, we're going to do this." But, but I feel very good about the direction we're heading into, and I sent an email to that parent listserv saying that you'll be, you'll be receiving some communication, and just please be a little bit patient, as, you know, it was an unexpected occurrence. I think the Marlboro administration handled it jointly because it was, it came out of left field, and it presented a number of problems for us. I do think that we can move forward, hopefully, with what we're going to try and do that might, that might be appealing to a number of the, the parents who are in that situation.
All right, thank you, Marbury students.
Thank you for coming. All right. We're going to move on to, really, I think at this point, we could take the agenda as one item, moving from G1 through K3. And Mr. Boyce and Mr. Toscano want to make an addition?
On the back table, it has been distributed to the board, this table is an addendum to yellow sheet of paper, amending G3 and G6 as amended earlier.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Sutera.
On H5.
Oh, okay. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt G1 through K3?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Sutera.
Okay, I have a question on H5. I'm not really sure. So we were given money from this, what I'm understanding this is, we were given money for this state to help a non-public school buy things that they need, and those things become, they're our possession and they're on loan to that school. Am I correct?
Yeah, but that's, that's state code, so.
Okay.
We have, we have to, we have to provide along certain categories to the private schools in the area, certain categories, and, and we are compelled to do that.
But the money isn't ours, it came from the state.
It goes from the state to purchase materials.
All right.
Certain designations certainly follow that, but the non-publics are bound to that. But we sort of are the administrators of the money that comes out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't our money. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Boyce, please take the roll.
Mr. Esatola?
Yes. Just, this is the roll.
It's the roll, Mr. Esatola, just note the K1, that as, as your name was, was on there, just abstain as to your, as to your, any reimbursement to you.
I thought it was the roll to approve taking the roll.
Oh, no, we're, we're, this is the actual resolution.
Okay, so this is the actual one, so I'm abstaining for my approval on K1. Everything else is yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except I abstain on K1, on my name, on Dr. Hazel's name, and Mr. Sampson's name, and everything else is yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes, except I'm going to abstain on my approval on K1.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, abstain on K1, Chuck Sampson.
Mr. Messinger?
Anybody have any old business they'd like to talk about? All right, new business?
Deb Clark, where are you, Deb? So we're welcoming Deb as the new controller. Deb's been working in the business office for seven years now, has it been seven years? Does a phenomenal job for us there, and as you know, Lorraine Simon became the assistant BH for Regional, and we feel really confident with Deb sliding over in that job. So Deb, congratulations, welcome aboard.
All right, then. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, the meeting's adjourned.